The May eleventh meeting of the Garden Grove City Council, call to order, and Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Brightigum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clompfenstein.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Next, we'll go to the invocation by Maria Stipe, and then can I ask Councilmember Deidra Tuha Nguyen to lead us in the pledge there?
Thank you, Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather tonight to make decisions for our Garden Grove community, help us to use our best skills and judgment as we evaluate the merits of each matter before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our city and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Put your hand to your heart, face with me to the flag, and repeat after me.
A pleasure, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands united, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, thank you. That takes us to oral communications. So we'll open up oral communications. I have exactly one card from Nick Dibs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm speaking in public comment tonight on several items. The first one I want to follow up with is during the past year of the pandemic, people had the opportunity to submit their written public comments and to have it posted on the website. Not everyone can come down here. There are many people who would like to perhaps give public comments, but they, for whatever reason, can't make it here. They should have the right, as was happened from March of 2020 to about March of 2021, to submit written public comments and have it posted on the website. So I want to go on record of again asking that the city clerk and city manager, city management and leadership grant that. In line with that request is another one, which is our school district allows people to call in by three o'clock and record a three-minute message. The city should also allow people to call in either live during the meeting or pre-record it so it can be played. Again, not everybody is in good health and can come down here, and it would be helpful to have the public comments, the method of either submitting them in writing for the public record as well as orally by phone. So this is just an issue of, you know, it's not codified in law, but that doesn't mean you can't do it. So please consider that. With regard to the upcoming college graduates reception this Friday, I encourage the citizens to watch that live or recording at three o'clock this Friday. It's on the city's website. There are seven of us who are co-sponsoring that event. I'm one of them, and I'm pleased for the fourth year to do this, and it's very important. With regard to, our city has a number of issues, and I want to applaud Kim Nguyen, Councilmember Kim Nguyen, for bringing up the youth, mental health, and so on. That's important. And lastly, I want to mention because we have a budget problem, we need more money. One way to get it is to do what I suggested about three or four years ago, which is to ask the city attorney and the staff to look into the feasibility of having a city-chartered bank. This is not a new idea, but it hasn't been done in a lot of places, but it could be done here so that the deposits of the city go into a city-chartered bank to make certain loans that then earn interest and provide extra income for the city. So Mayor, I want to encourage you to please look into having a city-chartered bank. Have the staff look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish you to speak? That was the only card that I had. Any other oral communications? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications, and let's recess over to, I believe tonight is just Successor Agency, correct? Yeah. Okay, so we'll open Successor Agency, and Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigum.
Here.
Member O'Neil.
Here.
Member Deidra Nguyen.
Here.
Member Clompfenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
And Chair Jones.
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications simultaneously with other legislative bodies. So we will move on to consent calendar, just receive and file the minutes from April 27th.
Move the motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigum.
Yes.
Member O'Neil.
Yes.
Member Deidra Nguyen.
Yes.
Member Clompfenstein.
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yes.
And Chair Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from Successor Agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council, and we'll reconvene City Council and go to consent items. It's recommended that 2A through 2E be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any requests to pull from my colleagues?
Or a motion?
I motion it.
Do we have motion in a second? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Nguyen, Nguyen, motions.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigum.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidra Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Clompfenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to items for consideration, and we do have three items listed tonight. 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution approving and adopting the 2020 Urban Forest Management Plan and the introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 11.32 of the municipal code entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Chapter 11.32 of Title XI of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to trees on public places. And we have Tina McKean and Rachel Sitz with the Davie Resource Group, Inc., here to provide a presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. While the team is ramping up the presentation for you, I do like to, would like to introduce the item a little bit further. The city received a grant back in March of 2018 from the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, in the amount of roughly about $574,000 to take on a series of tasks to reduce local greenhouse gas. The item before you and for council consideration is adoption of an urban forest management plan, introducing also the first reading of our, an update to our tree ordinance. Paul Guerrero, our real property agent, was the lead in facilitating implementation of this grant, as well as our team from Davie Resource Group. I'm going to turn it over to Paul to give a little bit more detail, and then some in-depth highlights from our consultant of the efforts that's been undertaken in the last 10 months. I would like to recognize, and I'm sure our consultant will also share, that a lot of the imagery that you see in our urban forest management plan came from our local Garden Grove students and their lovely local arts. So I'll turn it over to Paul. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. March of 2018, the city was awarded a CAL FIRE grant with the purpose to reduce local greenhouse gases. The grant required the city to complete the following: adopt a urban forest management plan, update the tree ordinance, perform a city cover canopy assessment, plant 363 trees to help regeneration along the Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail, complete a greenhouse gas calculation for the related trees. June of 2019, the Davis Resource Group was selected to assist the city to complete the CAL FIRE requirements minus the planting of the trees. The process included review of the city's tree inventory and forestry practices, meeting and interviewing stakeholders and community, information gathering via community online and in-person surveys, and community participation and education such as developing the city's urban forest management plan webpage, and a tree art contest by citywide Garden Grove students voted by the community and whose work is incorporated in the document. The plan is a guide and a tool to manage, preserve, enhance, and grow the city's urban forests and community tree resources for the next 40 years. The Garden Grove community trees are a critical native resource as they provide an environmental and value benefit that contributes to the city's quality of life. The plan includes the vision, concepts, goals, objectives, and actions. Some specific aims include best management practices that support health and benefits and safety of trees, increase urban forest health and resiliency by improving species diversity, managing pests and invasive species, to name a few. The amended ordinance is to update, align, and support the success of city urban forest management plan. The ordinance promotes the promotion of community trees and clarifies the permitting, maintenance, removal, and replacement process, along with any applicable penalties. As stated earlier, the Davis Resource Group is online to present a PowerPoint summary of the plan, and will be available along with staff to answer any questions. Thereafter, it's recommended to adopt the resolution approving the urban forest management plan and conduct a first reading of and introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions, comments?
Or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few comments.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm really excited for this plan. I think that it's amazing, both the financial and environmental benefits that I'll have for the community. A couple of things that I'm sure you all are already addressing, but for the sake of just asking the question, I want to make sure that this plan is also being bumped against our pavement improvement plan so that when we're looking at trees that we need to be replaced because they're causing issues with our pavement, that we're aligning those two plans together so that there's some cohesion between the two. Because, you know, when we had that pavement improvement plan come to council, we didn't really get a full report on that, and I know that I've been bugging public works about a lot of different streets where the trees are, the roots are causing sidewalks to be concave and potentially a hazard. So while I love the fact that we're going to be planting more trees because I'm definitely for that, I just want to make sure that we're also looking at what that's going to cost us as far as more trees could potentially have more problems. I saw in the report towards the end where there's different images of trees and the different mitigations that can be made in order to reduce the potential for roots to cause issues. I saw it was like root pruning, I think it was called, and then the different, like, fencing and protection for the, why can't I English today? The trunk of the tree. So all those different things were, it was really exciting to go through. Obviously, I'm not an expert, but hoping that we're aligning those two plans together.
Yes, that is correct. We're looking at all multiple plans that exist right now to ensure.
I just didn't see that one mentioned where we listed different plans, and that one specifically wasn't called out. I may have skipped it, though. So I did, I apologize. So just wanted that clarification. The second thing, obviously, I mentioned that it's a huge improvement for quality of life, but also I think financially, we have a lot of low-income communities that are living in apartments or in very crowded neighborhoods, and ACs, as we learned from our previous council meeting, is considered a luxury item, and so we don't necessarily give financial assistance to either repair or install them. So for families that can afford them, having more shade reduces the need to run an AC, especially during these long and hot summers, so I'm really receptive to that. And I'm hoping that, as I mentioned, especially in my district for the areas with dense apartments, that this is an opportunity for kids, too, for them to either be able to engage public work safely, obviously, because I know that can be dangerous, to learn about that. Because, I mean, I grew up living in an apartment all the way through almost high school. I wasn't out there, I didn't have a garden, I didn't know anything about planting trees or the benefits of that. So if we could use that in some way at some point to do some creative activities with our youth, especially the very little ones, just so that they can grow up learning the value of having green spaces in our city, I think that would be a really great thing to do. And the last thing, I just wanted to make a comment that I've noticed in other states and in other cities around California, there's like green strips everywhere, and in between these green patches, it's broken up by art and sculptures. So I know we have amazing things happening at the bike trail, but I'm hoping that as we progress through the future, that this is something that's implemented throughout the city, and it would be great to display, you know, artwork from our youth, et cetera. So looking forward to what this will translate in the future, really excited about it. Thank you so much for all the hard work that went into putting this together.
Thanks. Councilmember Clompfenstein.
Thank you. This is a very comprehensive plan. I actually really enjoyed looking through it, so thank you for all the hard work and extensive work that went into it. I think trees also hold, I think, for our community here, some historical significance. We have a lot of old growth in Garden Grove, trees that I think people can drive by or look at or walk up to or touch, and it's been there all their life. So I think trees play an emotional role, I think, too, in the makeup of Garden Grove. They provide landmarks and obviously beautification, and they kind of break up this sort of concrete jungle, if you will. And some of these trees in and of themselves is kind of art, and whether we've seen them being yarn bombed, or they have lights put in them on Main Street or so forth, I think the opportunities are endless. So I very much support this plan, and if nobody has made a motion, I'd be happy to.
Awesome. Councilmember Bowie wants to go?
I, this plan is very good, and I think staff have done a very good job in putting this together. This bring back a lot of memory for me. I came here in 1975, and I still can never forget the experience that I have. The first night I spent in Minneapolis, when I woke up, I looked out at the window from a second floor, and I saw a script lining up with tree on both sides of the, you know, of the script, and the tree were touching each other, and I thought this was like someplace in heaven. So that's how tree would be, you know, it's so very important to us. However, lately, I noticed the other side of the trees. It create a lot of problem for our residents, particularly, you know, the root of some type of tree, the root get into the sewage system, blocking it, and it become a nightmare for homeowner. I myself were faced with a, you know, $10,000, you know, repair because it blocked my sewage pipe in the past. The second issue that I got a lot of complaint from the resident is the dropping, the sharp dropping from the tree that, you know, sometime can damage the paint of the car. And lastly, Mayor Protem Kim mentioned earlier that tree uprooting the sidewalk. In fact, I know a couple house that the tree was uprooted, and it took the city a long, long time to fix it, to really fix it. But most of time, we just temporarily come by and apply some asphalt to, you know, soften the, you know, the level between the two. But that's not a real fix. It's ugly, and it caused a lot of inconvenience. I once parked next to the curb where it had been uplifted. I cannot open the door because when I open the door, it will hit that, and it will, I will not, never be able to fix it. Having said that, I think this is a good plan, and I will support it, but I want to ask staff, what are we going to do to address the tree issue? Are we going to maintain the list of some tree with, of course, we are not going to recommend what tree to be planned and what tree not to be planned, because we don't want to get into that, you know? Our city attorney looking at me here. We don't want to look, to get into litigation issue, but at least we should document some tree and some potential problem. Is that something that we can do, Mr. Omar? Take your time.
So for the trees that go in the parkway on public right-of-way, excuse me, we can dictate the types of trees that can go there. Sorry about that. I was, so, yeah, so we can dictate and regulate the trees that go on the parkway that are in the public right-of-way. What we don't regulate and we can actually make recommendations is trees that go on private property. In many times when we actually review site plans for development projects, larger development projects, you know, we do have arborists make recommendations for the trees that we, that the developers would actually install on those properties. Once the properties are sold to individual residents, then the residents can actually make changes, and they don't need permission from the city to do that when it's on private property. But if they want to change trees on parkways, which is part of the right-of-way, then under the new, under the ordinance, they would need city permission to actually change those types of trees. So hopefully, that answers your question.
So, so on trees that are planned on sidewalk, which is public land that belong to, the tree will actually belong and maintained by the city?
Not all the time. So if the city plants it, it will be a city tree. But there is a possibility that if there is no tree, the property owner can actually, with permission from the city, plant it, and it would be a, that property owner's tree, they would have to take care of that tree.
I see. So for the tree that we have planted, are we going to address the issue where if the tree causing, you know, a flif of the sidewalk or, you know, dropping into, you know, resident cars, are we going to address them, or?
We actually do address it, and we have a program, we have a tree trimming program that we basically go and have the city in different sectors where annually the contractor goes and trims the trees for those particular reasons.
Okay. Thank you. No further question.
Mr. Mayor, I, sure.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, staff, and for very well-prepared plan. I'm totally supported. You know, just like Councilmember Bowie and Mayor Protem Kim say, you know, some of negative, some of the negative side of having a tree, but everything have a two side of coin, the positive and the negative. I focus on the positive more, of which is, is actually helping us to pollution, reduce heat, right, and filter the carbon dioxide, but monoxide. So most of all, I support the plan. However, I look at over this, and I, maybe I'm overseeing, but I didn't see the particular, any proposal, what kind of tree are we looking at? Are we going to have any list of tree that, choices that we, we're going to plant? Is it going to be local, native tree, native plant? So that is something that I didn't see on here. Maybe I missed something.
There's a provision in the ordinance that authorizes, actually directs the city manager to adopt regulations and guidelines. And also, I do believe that our Public Works Department has a list of trees that are known to be drought tolerant and also not, not grow roots that would cause lifting of the sidewalk. But, you know, it has taken years to, to learn which those trees are, but now I think we have the list, and those are the list, those are the trees that I believe that the city purchases and actually plants.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot my technical question. I noticed that in the report, it stated, we do have one species of trees that were grow, we have over 13%, and I was learning about the 10, 20, 30 rule. So I was wondering, I was trying to figure out if that species of tree was on our list of like not removal per regs, and then I kind of got lost with the names of the species and trying to tie it back to the regulation. So I don't expect you to know the answer off the top of your head, but I guess my curiosity to the point of both Councilmember Bowie and the other Councilmember Nguyen, is for that list of trees that we will be growing, just to make sure that, you know, we are following more with, with the rule that's suggested by the plan, so that we do have more variety and diversity with our tree species. But I mean, I don't think it was over, it was over 13.8%, so not too significant, but just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that, to her point about like the list that's provided to us. I know that we probably won't dictate that because it's, y'all know best where, where these specific trees should go and how they will be, they'll flourish in the particular site, but to the point of making sure that we're keeping tabs on that and allowing for that diversity of trees and not seeing the same repetitive tree everywhere in the city. And then I think it mentioned in the report, because there are certain pests or diseases that these trees can have, and if it happens, then all of those trees will have to be removed, and we're left with having to start over. and we're left with having to start over, so that, and then I noticed that there was mention of the sites available for planting trees, but it didn't really mention if we were gonna do it in phases, so obviously, we don't want to have all the trees at the same time, because I overwork our Public Works Department as far as maintenance. So of the 12,172 sites available for new trees, are we gonna be phasing that over several years, as far as adding them to our repertoire of trees in the city?
The tree you're speaking about is the great Myrtle, by the way. The idea is that obviously, it would be in phases, and obviously, as budget allows, and as well as, as employees, because there is a limited staff who oversee the maintenance of trees, and not only the maintenance of trees, but they also do the channel maintenance. So they spend three days out of the five, five days doing tree maintenance, so it is budgeted, and it would, it would be over phases.
Anybody else?
I'll just quickly opine that I think trees are awesome, and I think this is cool that we've tapped into this source, I mean, urban forestry and urban forest grants that helped us achieve what we've started to do along the PE right-of-way for bike and pedestrian connectivity that I hope we'll continue moving on from one end of the city to the other over time, and things like that. I know there's a lot of work that you put into this, Paul, and others, Aaron Webb and others, you know, before you took it over, that this has been in the works for many years, and it's exciting that we're planting new trees. Certainly, there's challenges surrounding, you know, turning a forest into a city and then trying to turn it back into a forest after it's all been concreted and asphalted. So there's a delicate balance of this urban forestry concept that we're trying to achieve, and I think old mature trees that are, you know, that are breaking concrete and sidewalks and stuff have to be addressed, but by all means, you know, new trees are awesome, and I hope we keep doing it going forward. I think we have a motion and a second. Anybody else, or, okay, we have a motion and a second, right? Stephanie, and then Kim. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidra Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Clomstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Mayor, I want to make sure that the title of the ordinance was read into the record.
Yes, it was read into the record. I can read it a second time if you'd like for the record. It's an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending Chapter 11.32 of Title 11 of Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to trees on public places."
Thank you. Item 3B.
Item 3B is an award of contract to CTNT Concrete Paving, Inc., for on-call concrete construction, IFB number S-1281, and Mr. Murray is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a contract to CTNT Concrete Paving, Incorporated, for on-call concrete construction for public works projects citywide. As part of the Public Works Department annual maintenance program, CTNT will remove and replace damaged interiorated concrete infrastructure, such as curbs, gutters, driveways, and access ramps. The goal of this work is to reduce tripping hazards, standing water in gutters, which is breeding ground for mosquitoes, and to provide accessible sidewalks for disabled individuals. Staff received and opened three bids earlier this year and determined that CTNT Concrete Paving was the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the Public Works Department can begin using CTNT to perform concrete work in about a month. It should be noted that the contract is for $600,000 per year, with a provision to add up to four additional years for a total of five years. Funding is included in the street maintenance budget for the remainder of this fiscal year and will be included in the next two, you know, two-year fiscal budget. No additional funding is required. This concludes staff's report, and we're available. Should you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Question.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, sorry. Over here.
I think we need to reshape this thing.
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Murray. In granting these funds, will be able to expedite getting some of those wheelchair ramps in certain areas of the city where folks are clamoring for them? Is that true?
We deal with wheelchair ramps on, on an individual basis. We generally meet with the individual, and they will, they would like to go to certain places, and we will basically accompany them as they try to traverse through those places. And if we need to install new ramps, we will. If we need to modify existing ramps, we will. And if we need to rearrange the sidewalk grade, or if there's, you know, any lips or anything like that, we'll address those as well. So our, the way that we, we do not have a bulk replacement or any, that sort of a program for access ramps, they are, they are done on an individual basis, and that work is conducted by our city engineer, Dan Candelaria.
And those are the ones that grant access, so people in wheelchairs can actually like cross the street and that?
Yeah. When, if any individual has that sort of an issue, if, you know, they call City Hall and get in touch with us, and we will go out and meet with them, and we accompany them. Generally, they go to a couple places, you know, the library, or the park, or wherever it is that they need to get to, and we just follow along, or, but, you know, Dan does and notes everything that we need to do. We'll, we'll perform the work, and then we check in with them again to make sure that they can then traverse that particular path of travel. So we don't randomly put ramps in where they're not needed, we, but we do give very personal attention where they are.
Thank you. I'll move it if there's no other comments.
I'll second you.
Question?
Go ahead, Phil.
Is this budget including the possible cost to, you know, remove the tree and replace the tree with a new one, if that is applicable?
Those costs overlap a little bit. Our, our tree budget includes, you know, removing, removing the tree, grinding the stump. In some cases, the concrete crew will have to go out, remove the panels, and then remove the remainder of the stump, because the, the west coast arborist that grinds the stump will not remove the concrete. So those, those holes that the trees are planted in are very small for any type of a tree, to be quite frank. And so it's, it's a, you know, both, both of our divisions help each other out in that, that respect. If you're asking if this includes all of the costs for all tree damage throughout the year, in generally, we have about $2 to $2.5 million worth of damaged concrete that occurs each year, and we have $600,000 to address that. So we do the best we can with what we've got.
I see. So this would be strictly for, for the concrete material and labors and so on?
Correct.
If we have to, you know, you know, replace the tree or trim the, cut down the tree, then it will be handled in a different budget?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, all right, that's all the question I have.
Okay, we have a motion. Did we have a second?
Yes, Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen, second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidra Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Clomstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Item 3C.
Item 3C is an approval of a purchase order with Lenko Industries, Inc., for one public safety response vehicle and approval to appropriate funding, and Chief Deray is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here today to seek City Council approval to issue a purchase order to Lenko Industries, Incorporated, in the amount of approximately $285,188.18 for a public safety rescue response vehicle. Every year, the police department responds to a large number of calls for service that have a high potential for violent confrontations involving firearms. The police department is also tasked with handling responses to barricaded armed suspects, hostage situations, and potential terrorist threats, all of which could include the threat of IEDs, large caliber weapons, or mass casualty incidents, with an ongoing active threat to human life. The City of Orange recently utilized their armored rescue vehicle during a mass shooting incident that occurred in their city recently. Armored rescue vehicles provide law enforcement the protection required to respond to violent calls with the mobility to shield, aggress, and breach. However, armored rescue vehicles also provide a de-escalation factor. Armored rescue vehicles like the Lenko Bearcat have become a necessary tool for modern policing. Not only does an armored rescue vehicle protect officers, it empowers them to be more precise with de-escalation. The armored response vehicle would be utilized to rescue victims, mitigate injury to officers and rescue personnel, with both mobility and versatility. Currently, the police department has an armored military vehicle called an MRAP, which will be decommissioned upon receipt of the Lenko armored rescue vehicle. As described in the staff report, the funding will be derived from federal asset forfeiture fund and law enforcement restricted general funds. It is recommended that the City Council approve the cooperative use of the GSA Price List, GS07F169DA, for purchase of the Lenko Bearcat, approve dispensing with bidding for sole source purchase, cooperative purchase, and in the best interest of the city pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code 2.50.060 subsection CENG, appropriate $142,594.09 from the federal asset forfeiture fund, and $142,594.09 from the general fund, for a total of $285,188.18 to the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget for this purchase, and authorize the city managers to designate to execute the purchase order in the amount of $285,188.18 and make any minor modifications as necessary on behalf of the city. This is the end of my staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Colleagues, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, George.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed you'd mentioned the old, was it MRAP? Is that what you were calling it from?
Yeah, our MRAP vehicle, yes.
So, you know, I'm really happy about this, because I know the safety it involves with providing not just the officers, but also the community, knowing how those vehicles are, are utilized to rescue citizens from really bad situations. And, you know, I think a lot of people forget that, you know, it's, it's a double-edged thing. It works to protect not just the community, but also the officers involved. Currently, without this vehicle, if there was an active shooter situation, let's say at a school, or along the Disney corridor, or somewhere, how long would it take to get that vehicle out there?
The current armored vehicle that we have?
Correct.
Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah, and the reason that is, is it's a military vehicle, and it requires certain licensing. I only have two people in my department that have licensing for that, so I would have to call someone inside. The, the new vehicle, this, this Lenko Bearcat, it's anyone in my department, anyone with a Class C license, anyone can drive it. So really, we could have that on scene within five to 10 minutes, hopefully less, but we could get a jump on it pretty quick of field personnel that are at our station.
So that greatly improves public safety. And, you know, looking at this, I read some of the comments that were emailed, people were concerned with officers using it on patrol, just dealing around. This, in this, you saw this vehicle on the street, it's either the poop has hit the fan, or there might be some training involved, but you're not, you're not going to see just an average officer driving this around the city responding to radio calls, correct?
No, no, no one's gonna drive this around and go on to radio calls. You know, the only thing I could see us utilizing this for is, look, we do a lot of search warrants at some of these residences where there's 20, 25 people usually found in there with numerous firearms. They usually get taken over for gambling houses, things like that. We're seeing that throughout the entire county and throughout the state. We would utilize something like that more for de-escalation purposes than anything to get people to come out to us.
The use of this vehicle would take, what, a lieutenant or above to authorize, I'm assuming, or just an average officer can grab it and say?
Sergeant on scene, yes.
Okay, sergeant or above would have to.
Yes.
Okay. And again, I'm, I'm real ecstatic about this, because I know the safety that this provides the community and, and the officers, so.
Deidra, too, go ahead.
I'll move it.
Chief, I have a question. So for the current vehicle that we have, the MRAP, right?
I currently have the MRAP, which requires the special licensing, yes.
Right, so with the new addition of the new one, the Lenko, what we're gonna do with the MRAP, with the inefficiency and usage, what are we gonna do with that?
So we're working on that. Obviously, we get that with the 1033 program, the, the federal program, so we're in, in contact with them. We would dispose of that vehicle upon receipt of any new armored rescue vehicle. So it would, it would either go back to the federal government, or we would salvage it somehow, or donate it to another department.
So to follow that, to follow up your answer, if we dispose it or get back to federal, does the vehicle still have any values or on it that we can get some refund?
We got that through a grant program, so I don't believe we had to spend any money whatsoever to get that vehicle. So as far as value, we would more than likely have to return it to the federal government for their disposal.
Okay.
Which would require us to, to just work on logistics with them to get it over to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim.
Other than missing seeing what I call the Batmobile at our strawberry festivals when that date has come back, I'm, I'm supportive of removing a military-grade vehicle from our streets and usage. So my one question would be just, I know that it's mentioned in the report, and you've mentioned it in your comments regarding its use for de-escalation tactics, would you give us one brief example of how this vehicle would be used to escalate a situation?
Sure. I think, look, we see a lot of it on TV at the end of these pursuits and things like that. It puts us in an environment, let's say we have some type of barricaded suspect inside of a vehicle, could be armed or, or whatever. I think we just had one that, that has happened recently. So it gives us an opportunity to use, bring in hostage negotiators without allowing that vehicle to, to move away from us and be a constant threat to the community. I believe the last one I saw was, was in LA County, and I believe it was LA sheriffs that actually handled that incident. So they were able to deal with a female that was mentally ill or on drugs, and they were able to get in there, use hostage negotiators, use different tactics, safer for that person and us, to completely finish the situation without leading to lethal force or any other type of force for that. So that's really what we would use it for. When I talk about de-escalation, it's not because this vehicle's, you know, parked outside that they're afraid of it and they're coming out. It gives us an opportunity to use a lot of the tools that we have, that we would love to use on some occasions, that if we don't have a vehicle out there, then we're gonna be up close, then we run into a possible lethal situation if a weapon's pulled on us, so we want to avoid that at all costs.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
All right, I'm just gonna go ahead. Not to sound like a broken record, I think we've all been kind of saying the same thing, but I really think this paragraph here in the staff report really sums it up beautifully and kind of ties the whole thing up with a bow, and it's, "The Lenko Bearcat have become a necessary tool for modern policing. Not only does an armored vehicle protect officers and empowers them to be more precise with de-escalation techniques, the armored vehicle would be utilized to rescue victims, mitigate injury to officers, and rescue personnel with both mobility and survivability." So to me, I think that is all fantastic, and this will be a fantastic addition to the police department, so I fully support it.
Thanks, yeah, I'll chime in. So I've been in construction my whole, I have 36 years, and if I don't give my workers the tools they need to do the job, shame on me. And I just want to say that this, this vehicle-
And I just want to say that this vehicle, the deterrent it gives, the protection it gives to the officers and the community, if it saves one person one time or even prevents something from happening, it's worth the money. We spend a lot of money in this city on other, in my opinion, some frivolous things, on frivolous lawsuits and just a lot of stuff. People see a large number like that and they're shocked, but we see the details behind the scenes. So, I'm in favor of this to give, give the tools required to do the job, and our professionals are telling us to protect the community of Garden Grove, we need this tool. I'm going to give them that tool. Thank you.
Steve? Any other? Go ahead, Fat.
Okay. Chief, I am so glad that our PD have, you know, recommend the replacement of the MRAP with the Bearcat. Once I saw the agenda, I go to Google and try to look up, you know, what is this Bearcat do and what is this MRAP? It's all, you know, like Russian language to me, and I was so thrilled. The MRAP looked very scary, but the Bearcat is a better technology, better tool for law enforcement. I'm so glad that you, you know, researched into this and recommended us to replace it. So, I'm all in for it. I think the Bearcat will save the city even more money and allow our PD to, you know, have a better equipment to deal with, you know, hostile situation whenever it occurs. We have been fortunate that Garden Grove have not be a center place for, you know, this crazy, tragedy that happen every now and then throughout the country. So, I'm really glad that we're moving forward to it and such to see it, to see it in real life rather than on Google and online. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think we do have a motion and a second, right?
Yeah, I second it.
I'll just piggyback briefly on the way Councilmember John O'Neill framed it is, with the kind of stuff our guys have to deal with these days, it's a different world out there. In my opinion, this is definitely a tool that we, that we need to protect our guys on the way in and also to protect the public in situations where we're trying to get people out of somewhere or whatever this is. You know, this is something we desperately need, so I'm all in favor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightegum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you. That takes us to matters. I'll start with Councilmember Brightegum.
Sure, two quick matters. The most important one, though, happy anniversary, honey. It's our 30th wedding anniversary today and, you know, 30 wonderful years, so happy anniversary. Lastly, and kind of on the topic of the last subject a little bit, you know, recognize Garden Grove was ranked the 13th safest city in America. You know, that's quite an accomplishment, and I think, you know, our hats off to staff and of course, the police department, the police chief. You guys have done a remarkable job. The public safety application of our city is, we're almost in the top 10 in America. You know, that's quite a, quite a statement, so good job on that.
All right, I'd like to wish George and his wife a happy anniversary. And just wanted to remind folks, nothing really major for me tonight, but just remind folks to go to our website. We spend a lot of time and money on the information that's on there, so please, please go there, check out the different tabs. You know, we got a lot, a lot of people have times, they're always on their phone, or at home on the couch on the phone. Check out the Garden Grove website, check out all the information happening in your area, and then also there is a Garden Grove app. You can go on there too to request services, so just want people remember that that's there for their use. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuohag.
Just piggyback on Councilmember George Brightegum, is just, Garden Grove is one of the safest cities in US, right? But last, last, how, last week, we're the most relaxed city, second ranked in state California and among what, 134 cities in, across the country as well. Second May is the month to celebrate for the AAPI month, and just want also encourage everybody to get vaccinated. In Garden Grove, we have a vaccination clinic located in Garden Grove Park on Westminster, and it's open every Wednesday. St. Joseph Hospital actually working with the city to have that clinic open, so I encourage everybody to go on, I think my turn, to register, to make appointment, but they do accept walk-in. So, every Wednesday, 8:30 in the morning until 4:00, I believe, in Garden Grove Park. Also, I think start this week, Pfizer has also approved to vaccinate 12 to 15 years old. So, more information, please go online to make appointment. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Oh, by the way, congratulations and happy anniversary, Councilmember George Brightegum.
Councilmember Bowie.
Well, first, thanks, happy anniversary, George. And last week is a, is a really bad week for me. My cell phone was damaged when it fall 10 feet down to the, to the concrete floor, and for the first time I realize how I was so, you know, addicted to cell phone. Without it, I think I like cutting off from the world. The city hall cannot get in touch with me. I cannot interact with a lot of my friends, and I'm glad to have it back after a few days without it. But most importantly, Thursday, April 29th, when I get home, when my friend dropped me off at my house at around 9:45, 9:50, I notice of a strange lady standing at the corner of my house. I take, I have some weird feeling about her, but I just ignore it and said, and then just get into my house. Only about seven minutes later, I heard my wife screaming very loud, and I rushed out to her and noticed her standing at the front door and yelling into the dark night. What we have discovered afterward is that lady tried to break many of my big flowers vase in front of, flower pot in front of my house and tear down, break down about some 20-plus branch, some of which is as big as, you know, two inches or two and a half inches in diameter, and she did all of that within 10 minutes. Not only that, I have a couple steel pole that attach to the steel fence by tie grab, which can only be cut by a very sharp knife or by, you know, big scissors. So, this is really dangerous. I was glad that I did the right thing. I pulled my wife back into the home, closed the door and called police. The, you know, officer came within, within a few minutes and they were able to detain her. Turned out, we think she is a probably some crazy, I wouldn't say she's mentally, I do not know what happened, what her condition, but she seemed to be not mentally stable and probably a homeless person. So, but the scene that night was so scary for my wife and for my family because if you look at that, it, my, the front of my house is like a war zone. If it is just, you know, a couple, three was, plant was damaged and one of the flower pot was damaged, I probably would not be alarmed, but based on the damages that happened that night, we feel like there was so much hatred upon us, whether this is intentionally or just an act of random, we do not know the motivation, but it is, the damage showed that, that there is so much hatred upon us. The one thing that I was glad is all of us were safe, and we did the right thing by calling 911 instead of confronting this person who would have known what the outcome would be if my wife or I would come out close to her and confront her, because we believe that she would have something very sharp and we could be injured by that. So, I just want to take a moment to let everyone know, this could happen to everyone. I don't believe this is a hate crime, but I think this person has so much hatred that pouring out on anyone that she encounter. So, the best way is to be prepared for something happened, if it happened to us, best thing is to call 911. Some of you have commented in Facebook that we was privileged because we got city councils or police officer arrive sooner than for other people. I don't believe so. I believe police officer will respond depending on the situation. If it is something that, that are very critical, I think police officer will come sooner than some other issue where it is not as, as critical. So, on that night when I called 911, I explained very clearly that we were feeling threatened. That lady was still there in front of our house, and she probably have some, something sharp because otherwise she would not be able to break the big flower pot and pull down a lot of tree that we can see from the front of, the front windows. And so, that's kind of information allowed the dispatcher to relay the critical situation and, and I think that would be why police officer have responded very quickly to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that Steel Craft Garden Grove is hiring, May 14th from 2:00 to 5:00. You can also apply online, but they will be having interviews there on site, and they have links and more information on their social media pages, so I just wanted to make mention of that for anybody looking for a job. And it's also National Police Week. We've been talking about our police a lot this evening and this new vehicle that we've purchased, but National Police Week really honors the men and women who have paid the ultimate price in the line of duty, and I know that we will never forget the fallen heroes that we have here in Garden Grove. So, I just want to thank Chief DeRay and our entire department for their service to our city. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. As we know, June is Pride Month, and we will be lighting up the clock tower at the Village Green in rainbow colors, and if there's no objection, I'd like to ask if we can just play a pride flag, because it's difficult to tell that the rainbow lights are supposed to be a rainbow light. It looks very pretty when you're there in person and you see the different colors, but it doesn't necessarily light up in the order of a rainbow. So, I think that having that flag there would give the distinction for passerbyers and those driving to know like why those lights are there and why they're lit. Several cities are following this trend, most recently, and I think most notably is the city of Huntington Beach that just recently passed and allowed for the pride flag to fly at their city.
Okay. I don't have any problem with, does that require any kind of action or is that just a, is that something staff can just run with?
I don't, I don't know that there's any action required of council, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any concerns anybody expresses to the administration.
Anything else, Kim? I have one, a quick one, and apologize for doing this, but we have, so June 1st is a non-city council Tuesday. We have, tentatively, we have a budget study session scheduled for Tuesday, June 1st. Is it at all possible with everyone else's schedules, if we could move that to either the second or the third on a Wednesday or Thursday? Is it possible I could get that accommodation because I've got a schedule conflict with a big banquet for my son that I'd really like to not miss if I can possibly help it?
Second or the third works in the evening.
I can make that work.
I'm good either day.
With either the second or third? Anybody have a preference for second or third?
Yeah, I'm good with every day myself. Just there's a, we should note that on Friday, there's a.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I do have a problem with the second. I, I have a monthly meeting that I have to attend for my work on that day at 5:30, at 5:00 o'clock.
Okay, is the, would the third work?
The third works for me.
I know the second and the third works with.
The third is better for me because the second I have one TV program and one radio program at 2:00 and at 5:00 PM, so Thursday.
Everybody's okay with June 3rd, Thursday, June 3rd?
Yeah, I'm good with.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, that would be June 3rd at 6:30 PM as we originally scheduled it?
Any chance you could do that earlier?
Cool, thank you. I greatly appreciate that. City manager Scott Stiles, anything for the good of the order?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. One is I wanted to make sure council knew, Police DeRay has reminded me that our hate crimes website is now up and active, so the community can go and, and look at that. Just simply go to the GGCity.org police website, and under hate/crime/reports, you can see all the information that they gather on those incidents, incidents and be aware of what's going on. So, I wanted to let council members know that. On the American Rescue Plan, you might have noted, so we just received interim guidance just yesterday on, from the federal government that we're still analyzing, looking at, seeing how that's going to affect us. Our number has been reduced a little bit from 50.6 to 48.3 million dollars, but we will, we, I think we've already put up both the fact sheet and the FAQs on our website, on our American Rescue Plan website, so people can go and look at that. That's already been updated. A third item I wanted to mention is our community services staff. We are still on schedule and planning for our specific Buena Clinton vaccination event on May 20th. I've got the English version here in front of me, but we're having that translated obviously into Spanish, Korean and Vietnamese, so we'll be blanketing the neighborhood with handing these flyers out through John Montanes and his department. So, that's May 20th. I'll be getting that flyer to all of you too, so you can help get it out in the community as well. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, speaking of John Montanes, we will have John scheduled to come to our council meeting in the very beginning next council meeting, give us a little brief presentation on what they have planned for the summer, what's going on, those sort of things, so I think that'll be timely. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General counsel, anything to report?
We, we did have a closed session earlier this evening, but there is no reportable action.
All righty, thank you. And with that, we will stand adjourned, so thank you everyone, have a great rest of your evening. your evening.